You called this meeting, Charlie. What's the deal? Why don't you call us and ask the two groups to get together?
Chris, do you want to lead this off?
And I'd like to defer to -- go ahead, Mike. I'll go ahead and lead this meeting off. First of all, thanks everyone who is in attendance tonight on this beautiful evening to learn more about the economic redevelopment of Burlington. We're heading in the right direction. We're making good progress on our area-wide planning effort. And we're here tonight, both with the city council and Planning Commission members, to really function as a joint workshop. This is an opportunity for us, as the planners, to relay information to you, to help inform you so you can talk to constituents and other folks around Burlington about the status of the data that's been assembled and kind of where we're going with this whole effort. And it's an opportunity for us to get some initial input. What direction, what focus direction should we be proceeding on? So, again, thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. The agenda is going to be essentially, I'll give you a brief project overview for those who -- some of you kind of know what this is about, but I'll do it for everyone's sake as well as the public. We have a project overview. We're going to talk also about, we've developed a timeline for public engagement and better informing the public as well as getting input from the public with regard to this effort. We've completed a draft enhanced market analysis for downtown Burlington. So Chris is going to talk about that and give some great information that's come out of that study. Structures in downtown, something like that? That is now available in terms of characteristics of those structures, all kinds of information on them within the downtown district. That is available via a website that we're going to talk about. And then we're going to try to get into some discussion on where we go from here in terms of where do we focus some specific planning that's going to have implementation strategies, that's going to result in projects, that's going to result in economic development, tax base and jobs, as well as possibly remedy any environmental concerns that are out there associated with properties that may prevent private sector from investing in Burlington, Iowa. So that's the overall agenda.
Did you introduce yourselves?
Oh, yeah, that would be good, too. Yeah, thanks, Eric. I am Mike Fisher, Vice President at Impact 7G. We are headquartered out of Clive, Iowa. We are an environmental sustainability and planning firm out of Clive.
I'm Doug Hanji. I'm a project planner with Impact 7G. And my responsibility with this was to lead the site survey and assessment team. Maybe we'll hear more about that later.
My name is Christopher Shires. I'm a principal with Confluence. We're a Midwest-based landscape architecture, urban design and planning firm. We're obviously on the team as well partnering on this project, handling some of the master plan conceptual design work as well as public engagement. Not here, but we will be talking about their work is another partner on this project, Leland Consulting Group. They're out of Portland, Oregon. They're the ones that conducted the market analysis. That is their strength, their market research, market analysis, as well as a urban planning firm.
Okay.
Chris used to be a planner in Burlington many years ago. So there's something you don't like around town.
Yeah, you could blame Chris. So what was that, about 20 years ago, Chris? It was 20 years ago. Yes. All right. It is. All right. Thanks, Charlie and Eric. Just to give you a quick overview of what this project is all about, how did we get here? Well, the city has been proactive in addressing what I would call more troubled sites in the community as far as redevelopment for some time now, dating back to, I think as early as 2012, 2013 got real active, had some EPA technical assistance. Since then, city staff has worked to bring in some outside resources specifically from EPA to address sites. They've landed a $400,000 assessment grant that is used to provide environmental due diligence for prospective redevelopment of sites. They've also landed a $200,000 area-wide planning grant. And that's what we're here today for, is we are in the process of implementing the objectives that the city has laid out with EPA, who provided the grant, related to planning for the downtown Burlington area, specifically within the boundaries of the, primarily the boundaries of the self-supporting municipal improvement district or Schmidt. So we've got a $200,000 grant that we're working off of federal money to aid this effort and to help kick-start some more redevelopment activity in Burlington. We've got a two-year implementation timeframe that we're working on, that we'd like to complete this. My preference is if we can get things done faster, the better, and keep things moving, keep momentum happening. So I'm pushing that we get it done faster than that. But as you know, to schedule public meetings, to get input, to process that input, and to bring that all into a plan with implementable strategies, that takes time. So we're not going to do this overnight. We're not going to do it in a hurry. We're going to do it right. We're going to look at key properties, key assets that the city has, and try to see how we can foster a long-term sustainable redevelopment, leveraging private sector investment in the community. The goal of this area-wide planning effort is to complete a plan with specific implementation strategies and actionable items tied to those strategies. That is, at this point, we don't want a plan that sits on shelf. We want a plan that's going to help move things. And that's, you know, tough to do. It's very easy to create a nice, detailed, lots-of-data-type-plan, and it ends up sitting on a shelf or on a hard drive. This is going to have strategies that the Brownfields team, the Brownfield sponsor group, other interested parties and stakeholders in the city of Burlington are going to help implement to keep things moving. Our objective is to facilitate planning for the assessment cleanup and reuse of Brownfields as it's stated at EPA. Some of these sites are more Brownfield-type sites than others, meaning some have, may have legacy contamination issues associated with, let's just say it was a dry cleaner at one time and had dry cleaning solvent that had contaminated the property, or a gas station, or in many properties in urban core areas, often it's a real hurdle to overcome is asbestos abatement prior renovation. So, and/or demolition. So in either case, asbestos abatement can cost a lot of money. Some of the EPA's assessment money that they won from EPA can be used for asbestos and lead assessment to get it to the point where we can get some of this removed and remove that environmental impediment that is keeping developers from being interested in properties. So, and I've lost my screen, so if you could.
Can we do that extra?
Yeah. So if you look at the screen, we've developed a public input schedule. You can see the initial date here for this vision workshop. We're then moving to Wednesday, October 25th. We've got a public meeting scheduled. It's our first public meeting for this. And do we know where that's going to be at?
Yeah, Charlie, can we?
Do we?
It's going to be at the library.
Okay, great. So just so everyone who's out there listening, it'll be at the library. We don't have a definitive time. We will get that data out. Okay, 5:30. We now have a definitive time. Thanks, Charlie. So 5:30 at the library, October 25th. All those who are interested in advancing Burlington for the future of next generations, please be there.
Which is different from the date in the back end.
It is. You're correct. Yeah, we just, that was the former date. Yep, yep. So the 25th is the official date. We then are doing another sponsor group meeting. And this sponsor group was developed several years ago to facilitate engagement with other stakeholders in the community as far as Brownfield planning goes. So we try to collaborate as much as we can, share information, even with, you know, there's a lot of parties that are involved in this long-term planning process, even the school district, for instance. So we're going to keep that collaboration going. And then Monday, the 13th, we've got a catalyst site workshop. And what that catalyst site workshop will be is essentially a workshop that focuses on reuse, conceptual development, redevelopment opportunities for specific sites. It may be Dresser-Rand. It may be the area where the typewriter shop is. It could be Vets Auditorium area, the riverfront area. So we'll talk more about those, but they'll be specifically focusing on those and getting input on specific sites at that time.
Chris, next slide.
We've got several other meetings planned out for the sponsor group, reviewing concepts, an open house to review the concepts that result from some of the input, as well as the market analysis, the objective data that points to the feasibility of prospective redevelopment opportunities within the Schmidt. And then all the, at this time, these dates are yet to be determined for next year, but they'll occur into the first half of next year. So that, right now, is a public input schedule. First and foremost, October 25th, 5:30 at the library. So, and with that, Chris, I'm going to hand over our discussion of the market analysis to you.
Before you start, I just want to say a quick word about Brownfields. We're all familiar with them, but if you're not, a Brownfield is a building or a site where it's all contamination. Proceeding to Martin Park, it makes that site either unused or underutilized. So the Brownfield program, both the assessment grant and the planning grant, is about taking sites that could be, you know, could be used for a much better purpose, but for some reason are sitting vacant or underutilized. A great example is Tama Building. That site did have some asbestos in it. It was assessed, and that, you know, those assessments kind of gave a game plan for, this is what you need to do to make this into a residential building. And then an empty building that had been sitting empty for a long time is now being put back into use. It's a vital part of our economy and our community. And we focused our efforts here on the downtown because we have a good amount of structures that could be put to a much better and higher use, but for whatever reason are sitting empty. And a big focus of the area-wide plan is picking, so we can't do every building at once, but picking one, two or three buildings as catalyst sites that we focus our efforts on to redevelop, to spur redevelopment in the larger downtown area and in the greater Burlington area as well.
Well said. All right. Well, I'm going to run through some of the major points from our market analysis that we recently completed. It's a large document. There's a lot of good facts and details within it. And it is on the Burlington-Brownfield website, so if you want to see it in length. Should you have any questions on the data, on what it says as you're going through it? Charlie, if I could be so bold to suggest that they send, they email those questions to you, and we'll try to get those answered. But I'm going to run through, and before I do, I'm going to editorialize just a little bit on kind of the big picture of, you know, what we use the market analysis for in a planning project like that. But even before that, let's, since Charlie brought it up, I did work here over 20 years ago. And I think when you live in town, when you've been here for a long time, or just are new to the community, you may have forgotten where we came from, what Burlington looked like even 20 years ago. Part of Jefferson Street was still a pedestrian mall and closed off. The Burlington Hotel was vacant. The theater wasn't open. You had these old traffic lights downtown that some people really didn't like. You had parking meters that had maybe an impact on the community. Well, this has all changed. You had buildings that had temporary metal facades glued to the fronts of them. In my time coming back, and I came back actually two years ago for a planning conference here, working on a planning conference that was held last year here in Burlington, it is shocking the difference. You might not notice it, realize it, it is shocking the difference. You've made tremendous improvements over the last 20 years, and many of those improvements just have been in the last, say, five years or so. So well done. It is very noticeable to someone coming back. It's impressive. Okay, there's one or two restaurants that I missed, but beyond those other restaurants, this is great. I think everybody needs to be really proud of the investments the individual property owners have made, the development community, the patience and investments of the citizens and their tax dollars, as well as the elected officials and commissioners. So, one, just a little bit of thanks back to you guys for really having the true grit to stick through this. While this market analysis is going to tell you to keep up with that true grit, that nothing's going to be necessarily easy or handed to you, that every single project, just like the last 20 years, took a lot of work, well, they're probably all going to take a lot of work. And just keep it up, because I'm very optimistic for the future of Burlington and downtown Burlington in particular, that it's really going to be amazing the difference, say, in another 20 years. That you're headed in the right direction, you're ahead of a lot of your peers, and already making great strides to improve and grow your downtown. So well done. Now, with that market analysis, we typically do it in a planning process like this to help us gut check reality to right-size our planning effort. Sometimes it's a little bit of tough love, and sometimes we find unique opportunities or things to focus on for a strategy. And so in this case, let's just jump right into it. This market analysis is focused for downtown, but we do have to look at our region. In this case, that's typically lumped into Des Moines County altogether. And we look at, especially for retail demand, a 20-minute drive time, with then that immediate drive time being five minutes from what we've determined as the downtown area. Otherwise, when we get into something that has a farther reach, say, office demand or manufacturing demand, we really look at even a four-county area. So a little bit of background on some of the demographic information. Some of this will not be a surprise or new information to you, but population growth had been flat. In fact, you know, had previously had a loss. But now we're projecting, say, a near 1% of population growth rate countywide. That's a good positive thing because at least we're growing, although slowly. But slow, steady growth is often preferable to rapid change in either direction. A little bit on our housing characteristics, so that everybody always wants to know, well, how many rentals do we have versus owner-occupied? You're right in line county-wise with kind of that national average. Probably no surprise that in general, our home values, our home prices are a little bit lower. We also look at that as an opportunity as well. And that we have a lot of our population living south of Division Street, and we still have a relatively low downtown population. This, of course, does not include, you know, population growth we'll see, say, with the completion of the Tama Building. And I know I'm going through this quick, but you can always go back and look at the whole report. Probably no surprise, and this is normally what we see with downtown housing, the downtown housing we have today and what we will see likely in the future, tends to be smaller household sizes, not what we normally see in a, say, a single-family house on the edges of town. And they tend to be younger folks. That's who generally has that desire to live downtown, although our boomers, our baby boomers, are changing, in some cases, their preference of where they want to live. We look at that as another growth opportunity for downtown housing. Talk a little bit about incomes. That's another thing we use to try to project growth and demand for housing. Burlington is a little bit, and the county is a little bit in a kind of a middle-income sweet spot. And so, you know, we have lower average wages, but it's solidly in the middle-class, the working-class wage category. On education, generally, education outside of a downtown area is higher attainment. But in overall numbers, having some amount of college education, we're real consistent with the national averages. Now, I'm going to spend a little bit of time on this slide, a little bit hard to see from that far away. One of the, where people work versus where they live is one of our greatest indicators of where we can see growth potential or areas to focus on as a community. The more people you have that live and work in your town, the more balanced or parity or more healthier we consider that community. So in 2004, Burlington had about 6,500 folks commuting in to work within the city, and about 6,500 leaving the community to work, and about 6,100 living and working in Burlington. So rather balanced, but we look at those commuters coming in as potential home buyers or household renters, and we look at those commuters going out as opportunities for new employers to come into town. So when you have people either coming in or leaving, we look at those as both opportunities. So we'll see post-recession 2014, what had occurred. Those coming into Burlington to work increased by almost 2,000, and those leaving increased by almost 2,000. So we had this large in-migration of employees and out-migration of employees. And that amount of folks who live and work in Burlington went down by about 500 folks. So as a strategy, we look at this and say, you have folks you can attract to live in your town because they're already coming here to commute. What is their housing preference? What are we missing? And so focus back into downtown. That may be made up of a certain amount of boomers and millennials who have a desire to live in a downtown housing environment, whether it's an owner-occupied condo or rental apartment downtown. And then same thing, maybe for the city more as a whole, that 7,100 employees that are leaving to work somewhere else, well, what are those jobs? Are those jobs that that company could locate closer to where their employees are? That has been one change in employer habits, is moving to where their employees are versus the other way around. And this, this kind of shows that in a little more specific terms here, this table. So the more we can increase available housing and the diversity of housing, prices, types, rental, owner-occupied, different amenity levels, that could help reverse that trend of people not living and working within the city and within downtown. A little bit on employment by industry. So the yellow bar is showing folks that live in Des Moines County, and the gray bar is showing people that work in Des Moines County. And so you can see there's a little bit of a disconnect, say, in manufacturing. You have more people who are working in manufacturing in Des Moines County versus who are living. So there's about 1,000 gap. So manufacturing is the greatest outlier on that, followed by health care and then retail So a little bit on employment growth. Burlington has had some luck coming out of the Great Recession compared to some other communities. And the first chart, if you can read it from there, shows that monthly unemployment rate since 2000 going all the way into 2017 here. Obviously, during the Great Recession, we had a high at about 9% or so. Now we're down to 4%, and depending on which economist you talk to, 4% is either really healthy, or still too high, or still too low, but it's much, much better than being at 9%. So it's been a nice recovery. And in that, you look at the next chart, manufacturing at 784 jobs was a large growth area, followed by professional administrative services and health care. And we did have, way at the bottom, loss in retail jobs coming. And that is, in our opinion, is probably most from the retail sector taking a hit during the Great Recession and not recovering as we have changed how we purchase, that we do more online mail-order purchasing. And then we did have wage growth, although that wage growth, if we got into the details, is probably more in, outside the manufacturing sector, that wages increased. Let's look a little bit on residential growth. And this is countywide, so not just Burlington. Obviously Burlington's the largest population center of Des Moines County. But looking at building permit activity since 2004 to 2016, when we have a full year of data, the light bar is total units, and with that yellow being multifamily units. And so we see pre-recession that we had heavy building permit activity, both multifamily and single-family homes tapering off and kind of remaining consistent and steady. We do look at this as a little bit of a positive, though, in that we did have consistent housing through the recession and post-recession. In other communities, you'll see a flat for several years, not consistent with your housing rates.
Does that include the downtown in that chart?
This should include the downtown. And so what this would not include is like the Tama Building.
Yeah, but it doesn't, I mean, just city-wise, it doesn't seem like a multifamily.
Well, that chart is more.
And this should include the city, and so we can double-check on that data. It could be wrong.
And I wanted to clarify, so when you talk about certain population trends by census to downtown, that's within the population and drive, and that's not necessarily there? Because we know.
Oh, correct.
The city population is up by 90% since 1990.
Correct.
That's a positive factor.
Yeah, and even that 1% number is even county-wide population growth. And so as we kit out, it kind of gets softer as far as that growth rate. As we kind of focus in, it can sure have a lot higher ratio. So we'll double-check this chart to make sure we have the right.
I don't think that is right because, did you see that? It's like zero multifamily units residential growth, multifamily, and zero in 2009, 2010, 2002, 2012. Just the downtown unit wasn't that.
We will double-check the numbers. And so this is based on the counties reporting to the community census, and so I think we'll go hand-check that. But all that means is if we're missing some counts downtown, that it's even better. So it's solid.
Yeah, because it adds most of his building.
Yeah.
Well, or something's not in there.
And maybe how they classify them, too.
Yeah.
It could be renovations as opposed to new units.
Right, right. So we will, we will double-check that because we can, it's such a small area, we can do it by hand. Okay, so now we get into the fun stuff. So let's try to estimate what we think we can grow, what's our demand, so we can kind of right-size our planning, and also know just kind of what a real opportunity might look like. So we did this on a 10-year period, so 10-year demand, and this is countywide, that the county could see 2,300 units. And then we break out, you know, how many of that is owner-occupied, based on current trends, say, 75% of that would be in essence like a single-family house, or maybe an owner-occupied townhome. But then we need to make some adjustments on what we think that would be to just the downtown study area. And we look at a lot of different factors for that. So we kind of have a range here. Over a 10-year period, conservative, say, 94 units. Optimistic, 140 units of new rental within the downtown. And then we look at owner-occupied, and that could even be in the form of a true condo, multifamily condo, or it could be in the form of, say, a row house, townhome, something like that. Something in the range of 21 to 43 units downtown over a 10-year period. And then, let's see here, I wanted to see if I added that number. We did ask for some guesstimates on some, what we thought might be the senior housing market. And so, you know, some kind of a similar number to this 21 to 43 could be realized for, say, senior-centered, senior-focused housing units, not assisted-living skilled-care type. Any questions on that? Okay, so that's kind of getting into what we think conservatively can kind of happen in the next 10 years. So let's talk a little bit about retail. So we looked at housing, let's look at retail. Well, when we look at the characteristic of the community, where everybody's focused on both maps, the little yellow dots mean generally where there's housing, where there's residential, the larger the dot, the more residential. And this is by census tract. And then the red dots are retail, and the larger the red dot, more where there's retail. And so, of course, when we go out to Roosevelt, that's where all, so much retail is focused, that's where we have the most red dots. But we know as you go east towards the river, that's where we have so much residential. And so right now, there's a little bit of a disconnect where you got 60% of the population in one part of town, but only about 20% of the retail. So we look at that as a growth opportunity. So we look at that as a growth opportunity to get retail closer to where the population center is. And especially if it's new retail, people have a tendency to want to shop up, they want to go to the newest and greatest thing. And so, you know, that is a potential for downtown. So looking at that, we look at the current, where retail dollars are going. And so we have this kind of standard leakage and surplus chart, and so what that means is, when you have a surplus, and so this is the blue bar, that is retail dollars staying or coming into your town, into your community, into the study area in this case, which this is everything within 20 minutes of downtown. And then the green is leakage. That's, that's dollars that are going to another community, that are leaving the 20-minute drive time. And so surplus, you want as much of that as possible, it's like a trade imbalance, you want to be having a greater amount of trade coming in, or dollars coming into your community than leaving. And anytime you do have a leakage, you see that as an opportunity to try to grab that money back, or grab those, that shopping power back. And so right now, kind of the categories that make sense, and a lot of this, again, is along Roosevelt's, or a little bit farther to the west. But one of the leakage points is grocery. And so that's one we try to drill into a little bit more, and maybe that is an opportunity that there's a little bit of grocery capacity in the community. So we turn retail into some no-kidding what we think square footages are overall, and so within that 20-minute drive time, when you take in a little bit of household population growth, that's the light part of the bar, the light blue. Leakage recapture, that's just like, like I had at the top there, food and beverage, the grocery stores, trying to get that money that's leaving the community back. And then the yellow is replacement, a building ages out, a retail store closes and gets replaced by another one. And so we can, we can kind of come up with a big fuzzy number, I know it's very precise, but 117,000 square feet of retail would be needed within this 20-minute drive time, say, in the next 10 years. So what do we think downtown can capture? So maybe we're in the ballpark of capturing 24,000 to 37,000 square feet of retail in a bunch of different categories over, say, a 10-year period. As we grow population downtown, that'll be much more attainable. If we don't grow the population downtown, attaining this will be much more difficult. And then we broke it into some categories. Food and beverage really being that top category, and then food service, restaurants, bars. So with that, in the back of the market study, market analysis, is a table giving us our spots to watch for, our growth areas, things to look at. And so in residential, just a nice summary, again, thinking 40 to 70 units of ownership condo, townhome, rowhouse downtown. And then again, still in that 10-year time period, loft apartments or apartments, 100 to 170 units, again, within that 10-year timeframe. Doing that will help make more of the retail likely. And there's my little footnote at the bottom, about 80 units countywide of new senior housing, not assisted-living, not skilled care, but just independent senior housing, could be a realistic demand in five years. Hard to put a factor on how much of that could be captured downtown, but there is a demand out there. And then getting into the non-residential, the retail side of things, with that population growth downtown, so a restaurant, or a grocery store, not a 100,000-square-foot Hy-Vee, but maybe a small format Hy-Vee or specialty grocery store. Of course, restaurants and drinking establishments, especially as the population grows. And then maybe some, some other reach opportunities, you know, is there ability for some type of annex for the community college to have more classes downtown, some type of annex space? We do have boutique hotel in here with a small amount of convention space. And then, of course, just generally, things to, other things to watch for, the specialty retail professional storefront, kind of what, to get us in the right size, that we're not attracting 100,000-square-foot big-box retail, that wouldn't be appropriate downtown anyway, but some of these more specialized, small uses. Also in the back of the market analysis are some generalized comments from Leland in their professional capacity, as being a strategist, market strategist, some, some good things to say about Burlington. It does make a difference that you're staying on top of infrastructure, and that you have a commitment to the community, and your economic development pushes, so between your different organizations, that does make a difference. This community, as you guys all know, it's beautiful, it has the, and I love this statement, good bones of a downtown. It has the buildings, it has the grid layout, it has the compelling architecture, it has the river, which most communities or many communities do not. And they say, we want to, we want a downtown, can you get us a downtown? Well, no, you got to start somewhere, it'd be really hard to build one from scratch.
How many points do you deduct from us for having a city manager with no sense of humor?
I will ask, there's a couple of points.
Point of order.
I'm sorry, please continue.
Yeah, that was noted in one of the footnotes, but we removed that, because we were worried he wouldn't approve our payment. All right, and then just a couple more. So you've had a lot of momentum in downtown development in the past five years, and you've been exceeding expectations. When you look at the numbers, these, these numbers, they can kind of suppress and think, gosh, we're really not going to see all that much growth, but you've already been exceeding that. And I call these once-in-a-lifetime opportunities, you never know when they show up, you're going to have some kid graduate from high school, come up with a great idea, and he's going to open a business, or she's going to open a business here, another wine guard or something like that. And so, you know, that can always happen, and so you're already doing everything you need to be doing, and then some to, to grow. And, and we've seen this nice, this last bullet point, we've seen a nice renaissance of many of our downtowns, but they've typically been in bigger cities, and cities that are more in a regional center, a larger regional center, such as, you know, Des Moines or Cedar Rapids. But, and so some other communities are trying to play catch-up, but you guys are already ahead of the curve. You've already been doing what you need to do. So the big thing I would say is, it's, a lot of this is just true grit, stick with it, keep doing what you're doing, fight for every project. Any questions on the market study?
When was the date that this ended and it was published?
The market study is just from last month. And so I left it with draft, so that just like, we're concerned that we don't like the residential growth chart, that we can keep it open and edit it and...
I saw a lot of it ending on 2016, and I thought maybe it's...
Oh, so what we, we have to use it on the best available data. So a lot of times, it's a full year of data, and the reporting of it doesn't occur until, like, the 2017 data doesn't come out until 2018. So it kind of depends. So we use a lot of different data sources, whether it's census, ESRI, there's a couple, a bunch of sources that Leland uses, and it just depends on how far out it's really available. So that's why, in a lot of cases, it is 2016, so it's not showing, just even in the last year, what's happened.
Do they quantify the skew related to the Burlington?
So, no, but that's a really great question, back to them, and we did talk about that, that that probably has a little bit of skew in what has happened in the past over retail trade, which was a little shocking that, that you had so much loss in retail trade jobs, because we would have thought that would have been this strange, short-term outlier. So that is probably a point of concern, is once the construction is all done, shut down, and those temporary workers are gone, which is now, that that may actually hurt, have a little short-term dip in how retail's operating.
I was just curious on the food and beverage, why would that be a leakage? I just don't imagine, I don't imagine people going out of Burlington for a grocery shop.
Yeah.
How does that work?
And that was a, kind of a surprise to, to us, that's normally, so grocery stores is normally not a major leakage point, unless you're like...
Costco?
Amen.
Oh, that's...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and that's, that could be Costco.
Because you were talking 20 minutes, outside 20 minutes, so...
Yeah, so what's that next retailer outside? And it could be all the way up to Costco.
Dutchman.
Yeah, I know.
You put a Dutchman in organic meat there.
Okay.
And a Dutchman grocery store.
What if you go to Dairy Bill for meat? Organic meat.
Charlie, you are here. So, but I, so you're questioning that is spot-on, it is a little surprising. So we look at that as an opportunity.
And then do you share this information with, like, local employers? Would Hy-Vee be aware of this, or Aldi?
So your economic development folks sure can and do, and so we haven't, but it is on the Burlington Brownfields website, anybody's welcome to it. Yeah. Okay.
I will say that in a lot of the communities we're working in, grocery stores downtown are becoming very, very popular, and they're doing very, very well.
I would think they start to be coming back.
They are coming back, yeah, for sure.
We, you know, we had one that was a bigger one.
And what timeframe was that?
Close to 2009 or 10. It's just bad timing, it was just a little too soon.
So, so what you're seeing now, let's, let's look at the residential units coming into downtown, that is what sustains those stores. They benefit from some of the workers coming in, yes, they may go buy and pick something up before they go home, but really what sustains them and gives them the foundation to operate cash flow month after month is the people that live there and shop there.
It was kind of large, I think, for years. How many years was it open up?
I think it was just a little too soon.
Yeah.
Downtown's ready, downtown's ready for a store.
I think it is, but, yeah.
It closed after 2012. It closed after the first contract. Yeah, it hasn't been, it hasn't been five years.
And the other thing on retail just being so, so tough, you know, the, I hate to call them retail giants, but, you know, the large retail trains have the buying power, the distribution, the setup, you know, built-in efficiencies, you know, Hy-Vee is very good at, you know, adjusting to customer preferences, obviously Walmart too, Super Target, they're hard to compete with. They're, they're very good, in fact, Hy-Vee definitely is getting into the downtown market and focusing on alternate store types.
Grocery, I mean, like, one of the grocery sites, I think.
Yeah, we don't consider them, we consider them a part of us, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
That's what we look at, Hy-Vee.
Yeah. They're a...
Right on, right on.
That's right.
Share it with us.
Well, All Days. Oh, yeah, All Days, All Days, they're, they're, two of them, you can go there.
And, and maybe All Days will bring in a Trader Joe's, wouldn't it? I mean, that's what everybody wants.
But I think All Days is becoming more like a Trader Joe's, so I don't know if they would need to bring in a Trader Joe's.
Maybe they'll start going back to All Days, it's been a while, I don't get their career up. I know if we get something downtown, though, that guy's going to get a phone call every day to have to bring something home. I'll tell you what, raise the, we'll talk about it later, James.
Okay, so. Doug, you want to talk a little bit about the website and what's on?
Sure. So if you go to burlingtonbrownfields.com, we have a survey or a website outlining the whole project that we're doing here. And when you open the page, you have a screenshot of all the dots we've done, which represent each survey of properties in this downtown planning area.
And just to clarify, this would be a, a page within the overall Brown, Burlington, Brownfield website. The Burlington Brownfield website covers everything, covers assessment activity that the city's working on, and overall initiatives, lots of information, resources, has a resources page, if you want to, you know, get up to speed on what all these programs are about, how they work, it's all on there. So this is the area-wide planning that Doug's talking about as a subset page?
Yeah, so backing up to the actual, the homepage of the website, it gives you a history, the funding source, who's involved, the city, our firm, Confluence, Leland, the highlights of what's been going, where we started and where we're going with this project, and then, like I was talking about, the area-wide planning, and that's why we're here today. And what you see up there is an interactive map that we've put together for the public and city staff and anyone else who wants to look at it. And that was the result of site surveys that we did in mid-July, three days, we went to each, to each site, and we had a list of items that we looked at on each site, the conditions of the windows, were there benches outside, are there trees?
What type of lighting?
What type of lighting, are the windows boarded up? Is it a, is it a brownfield, just based on your visual assessment of that site? And, and that's the result you see up here is if the site is a potential brownfield or not. If you, if you go over to the layers button, right there, there's a whole list of different layers that you can look at. And we have everything from type of lamps, parcels, the building footprint, the current land use, the overall building condition.
It's all live on there for you to play with.
Yeah.
Just hit that layers button, and you can, you can screen a lot of data.
That's nice. So... Yeah, so if you have any feedback, feel free to contact us, either directly or through the website.
So, so the goal of this, this plan, and the, the plan is going to have a real specific focus on some catalyst sites that help momentum, we're still looking at the whole downtown area, we're looking at walkability characteristics, some of the infrastructure characteristics, and those will be discussed in the document as well. Because the downtown is one unit, yes, we're going to look at subsets of that for economic reasons, but we have to have the area function appropriately to bring workers down here, to bring more jobs down here, to bring businesses down here, et cetera, residences. So it will address the entire downtown. So this, some of this data will help us in that effort from a bigger-picture schmid perspective.
Okay, all right. Now, a little more fun, and this is where we're going to need a little more feedback from this group, is a part of this project, like Mike has talked about before, is we're to evaluate a couple of catalyst sites, come up with some conceptual planning for these sites to see if we can spur some more immediate growth and redevelopment. We had originally identified two sites, Site One being the Dresser &amp; Murray Turbo Site, and Site Two being the Typewriter Building. And so as we have been getting into this project, we're starting to question whether these are the sites for us to review, and if we instead add one more to it, or change it around. So first, you guys know and love the Dresser &amp; Murray site very well, you've put a lot of energy and effort and finance into cleaning up the site, getting it into a, a nice, clean, grassed condition like it is now. That is Site One. Site Two, the Typewriter Shop building that DPI owns, it's had obviously some, a little bit of restoration, stabilization, a little bit of cleanup, very, very near to us, obviously, and in a very strategic location downtown. There's kind of a aerial perspective of the building identified with a red dot. And so as we look at both those sites, if those are our two catalyst, catalyst sites we focus on, we would probably, our conceptual planning would actually include the greater block that the Typewriter Shop is sitting on, and even the Dresser &amp; Murray site, we might, you know, just kind of look at the, the larger area following the railroad tracks a little bit. So considering opportunities that are out there, another option is, we have the former police department building, as well as Moose Lodge right next to it, the parking ramp is right next to that, of course, with the Circle K set up with it, there's kind of a perspective looking east towards the river. That is a potential site for consideration. And then just keep going along, so right next door, so across from the Typewriter Shop, across from the site we're just talking about, is the Drake, we're calling it the Drake Super Block, all owned under, we believe all under one ownership, and so is there a potential, you know, for the large parking lot area for redevelopment? In fact, it's our understanding that Mr. Genes... In fact, it's our understanding that Mr. Jensen had been contemplating a hotel at this location.
He needs to quit contemplating and get down with business.
It's all options.
Hey, it's great. I think that would be number one in all of these as far as catalysts to help develop.
Yeah, so what, what we're interested in trying to do is spur those particular areas that are gonna have trouble moving forward. If this area is so attractive that private sector is already looking at investing in it and doing it, and we don't see environmental or other impediments to them doing that, then let's take our effort, let the private sector move with that. Let's take our effort and focus on another area that is gonna have a little more trouble moving to it, so that we can get that one built into the process.
Sam, show this to us a few weeks ago. I don't know that he has any funding lined up for this, but he owns the whole block now. If he wants to do that, other than partnering with people, I'm not sure. I just know that.
Well, isn't he an LLC? He doesn't own it by himself, does he, the Drake? I thought he's an LLC.
There's a board. I mean, we're talking to Sam, we're not, I mean, Sam is the only person that he's in.
But I don't think that, that LLC owns that whole block. Is it Sam or, or does, or is it owned by Drake?
I think Sam is actually listed on some of the parcels.
Some of them are. Personally, yeah, that's correct.
So regardless, it's, it's a, you know, it's great to see this kind of vision in the community. I mean, that is spectacular. It points to a few more units than, at least on the hotel front, than probably what the market study says. But I think there's some other ideas for apartments or townhomes in the upper story of that structure.
And that would definitely be an option. So if it doesn't quite pencil out as all being hotel units, rooms, why couldn't the upper floors be condos?
It's a, it's a well-done, beautiful concept, beautiful vision. Gives you an idea of, if not there, maybe somewhere else. If, if this isn't the right spot or the right size, something like that could still happen here in downtown and, and what that would do for, again, bringing people downtown, bringing even residential, more residential downtown, leading to the grocery store, leading to greater use of the riverfront, leading to trail systems. And in part, what I'm seeing in some of the communities we're working in is...
More parking?
We're not, no. We're seeing, we're seeing more millennials coming downtown into these types of environments. But they're wanting to see also the recreational aspect. So again, the connection to the riverfront, the connection to the trail system, the pedestrian, bicycle mobility. Again, we're in Burlington, we've got some hills here, so it's challenging. Good for the cardio here. So, but just so you know, that, that all these pieces are important to attracting people. And really, you know, living downtown is a key ingredient of revitalizing the downtown.
And then, just to keep things from being too easy, we threw in one more. And so we have this opportunity of the, the riverfront.
These guys, you guys did that just for me, didn't you?
So we, we have our, we have our, our riverfront, we have the port, we have the Veterans Auditorium, we even have the depot. So, and we do understand that the, the city has been struggling with the, the funding necessary for the auditorium, the Veterans Auditorium, in keeping it running with its activities. Pardon me? I'm so sorry.
But if you want to go to Des Moines.
Tell you what.
Memorial, not Veterans.
You can call it whatever you want.
Yeah, see, I, yes. So either way, you know, do we look at this as a, as an opportunity site? Do you want us to focus in on what could happen? And I suppose there's a lot of options. I'll just, I'll just throw them out. And so do you keep Memorial Auditorium as is? You continue to fund it? And we do, continue with the site improvements that you've already identified in some previous planning exercises?
And try to expand opportunities to utilize it.
Yeah, and it, does it, does it even, you know, get a, a bigger remodel to kind of expand the interior or make it a little more functional with today's needs? Do you change it? You know, that's kind of the, the kind of the status quo. Or you do something more major where you're doing a significant remodel or, or, or change to the structure? Or do you even look at, does that building maybe go away and is replaced with something else? Something that is maybe more cost-effective for the city to own and maintain? And could those served functions that are going on in there now go into a new building that's in another location or another facility that's maybe shared? And so some things that, you know, could be that potential is the school district is interested in a new auditorium. Is there an opportunity to partner that the, the couple of major important functions that are going on in the Memorial Auditorium today?
Keep talking.
Could they go into a new joint facility that's shared with the school district? Very, very common for two taxing entities, the city and the school district, to share those limited tax dollars. School district does have often more opportunities to get sales tax dollars to fund new construction. So is there an opportunity there that you could create a new facility that meets everyone's needs and is a little easier, more affordable to maintain and is a, a modern facility? Kind of meet the needs and demands of, of who's in there now?
I'll have some of that.
Okay.
Becky, don't bring me down. Right now, I just want to just enjoy the moment. I'll have some of that.
One, one thing I think you all know...
That's a great question.
Is you have this riverfront that the city owns forever.
Right.
It is really, really rare. Other communities would kill for this. It's the Mississippi River. It's not a little river. It's an important, major river. You own the riverfront. You have a tremendous amount, opportunity to create what people beg for. They want public gathering spaces. They want program space. They want space where they can do things. And right now, if you have a building that's not meeting your needs, is this an opportunity? And I think, to be fair to the process, we, this is something that if you want us to look at, we need to vet that. We need to hear from the, the public at large that would come to our meetings, hear what their thoughts is on the potential for this site. Does a building stay? Does a building change? Does the building leave?
And to address financial sustainability. Is it financially sustainable in the long term? Can we make it financially sustainable in the long term?
This particular building, I guess I don't think you can.
Yeah, so I mean, obviously there's, I mean...
There are things that would bring in money instead of money going out there.
And it's a, as we understand it, it's a hard facility in which to get it more heavily programmed, so that maybe it's bringing in more revenue than it costs to, to own and just operate. Is that an outdoor amphitheater of a certain size, a memorial amphitheater? Is there a way to kind of make it this, open up the riverfront? So if we go back and we have the, the Drake Super Block do something great here, now all of a sudden you've kind of opened up even a greater view corridor in a public gathering space that's more than even just a parking lot.
So Chris, I think all these things are great, and I'm on video, but all of them, we don't pay you for so many. So what, what do we have to choose? The two or the three? What can we do here?
So Charlie, I'm glad you asked that question.
How much we pay this guy?
Yeah, that was perfect. So we committed to two, but what we think we'd propose is we'd actually do three. So three, all with, one of them maybe at a little bit lighter scale of, of design, of, of concept. We think we need to keep Dresser-Rand, that's important. That is a gateway into the community coming down Central. So we need to figure that one out. We would propose that it is Memorial Auditorium and the Riverfront. Now, so maybe the question comes back is, well, what's that third? Do we need to keep the Typewriter Shop in there? Do we throw in instead the Police PD Building? We know what the use of it is. Or do we, or we, or do we, you know, look at the Drake Block? And I think in the case of the Drake Block, you know what? Market may actually take care of that. It's not to say that there's not some park roles for the city.
I hope so, but then that kind of changes, you know, because we, we've all been talking about needing downtown hotels. If they do it, then we don't need it in the Typewriter Shop, but we don't need it on the river. So that would, we need something different in this.
Correct.
Right, right.
And so I think these site plans need to consider the synergies and what's happening in one block. As we develop a conceptual plan for one, what happens on this block then? And, and so I think our, our light, we may develop some detailed site plans and some concepts, and then play lightly on the potential end-use of the adjoining blocks in terms of the plan.
Do we still need to help, do we still need help with the Typewriter Shop Building? Help with it?
Well, yeah, I know, but I just kind of figured you had that on lockdown and that, you know, man, put you on cruise control and you just go. So I just figured.
It's on the market. Jesse's working hard. Do you want to sell it?
Yeah. If going to Police Department Building, you know, I'd, I'd probably say that which one's in a better spot? The Typewriter Shop Building's in a better spot. It is funny that Police Department's probably up.
Which one has more visibility? I mean, which one, when you're, when you're looking at everything, which one does your eye go to? I mean, I think the Police Department Building is not that visible.
Okay, there's, but then on the other hand, which is better if you're standing inside and running up? Police Department's better.
But you, but you mentioned that you want to go for the harder nut to crack. So which one's not crack?
Well, Police Department's already cracked. That's why we're moving out.
Okay.
It could crack.
Yeah, good point.
And you have the, the nice Moose Building next door. I don't know what the condition of it is, but its facade is beautiful. I mean, as you guys know well.
Yeah, but, can I have a reference second to that? Um, my historical, we just moved to town maybe two years ago. We own a quality in here in town. About a year ago, we decided that we thought a boutique hotel would be beautiful downtown. And so we've been working with Jesse and a few other people, we work with the Typewriter Shop and I was also with Moose and the police station. And we thought the same at the break. And so we're doing a lot of, trying to figure this thing out. We haven't landed yet at all. But our thinking recently has been the Moose and maybe buying the police station, knocking down the police station and somehow combining those, the new structure and Moose Lodge into a boutique hotel to overlook the Mississippi River and Bridge as a backdrop. So I just wanted to throw that out there, but...
But you did. This is good to know, do all the players know.
Yeah, and we have talked to Sam and, you know, that block needs a lot of money to put that block. And then knocking down would be a lot of money. Is that feasible in our minds to put a boutique hotel up there after you paid the money a lot, knock it down and we know it's not gonna work? Maybe a hotel is not gonna work. And that's just our opinion. A hotel is not, is our opinion, it won't work. Forty grill boutique hotel would be much more feasible in Burlington. And that was in our plans, you know, the past six months to the year. So just wanted to throw that out there, that maybe the Moose and the police station could be boutique top. I think the views would be amazing. I think it'd be a smaller location, a smaller deal. We have a restaurant down in the main floor would be our idea. And maybe this sort of ride could be a main floor. But you should have a parking next door there.
Somebody stop this lady. Somebody shut her down. We get excited over here. We get excited over here.
The parking ramp could be next door. It may be even going to a second floor parking ramp possibility on top to have some more parking for the downtown spaces for hotel, restaurants. It's a really good point. So anyway, that's my recommendation in that whole situation.
So on, on the Drake Block, where are you looking at? Half a block or the whole?
The Drake? I don't know if I can, can we say how much he wants or not?
No, no, I was just, in terms of the area, how much, how much area?
Well, exactly. Where he was at, was going to be knocking down the old, what is it, the belt? Is it a belt?
The old half block.
Okay, the half block. Okay, okay.
Half block, yeah. Um, maybe, you know, and, and Sam has shared his rendering there of, of his idea of what it is. And we've been talking to him about that. It's too big. I think, but that's just my opinion. It's way too big of a hotel for downtown planning.
But with the upper stories being residential, would that...
And, and the other thought is if there was a conference center?
Yeah, if he did, upper story and conference.
You just have to find the right person to partner with that.
Yeah, right.
But it's, it's not feasible for us to necessarily partner with it. It's too, it's too, it's too much.
Right.
I like your idea. It's too hard. And I love the bridge. I love the bridge. I love more buildings. The idea of renovating the Moose and keeping that intact and then adding on to somehow with the facade, the same as old and historic, really speaks to our heart, just keeping the, the downtown looking way there a long time now. And even the boutique hotel aside, keeping it very forty-ish, thirty, forty-ish back in time where it was marble and was and beautiful, great trees and beautiful materials.
And maybe part of the Moose could be kind of, you know, smaller car, conference space as well because of the...
Lobby, donut shop. There's also a practice downstairs.
Okay. Outstanding.
Well, as you said, if I couldn't...
Yeah, nice to meet you. Nice to meet you. Always good to have you. Always introduce you.
It sounds awesome.
BD, Moose?
But we also want to have competition with hands. We've got to come up with, you know, something where we can look together.
So we could...
I don't know if this, this, this fear of competition.
All three.
There's no such, I think in one of my first marketing classes, a guy asked me, where would you build a gas station? And everybody said way out. And he said, no, you won't. You build it within South or Gas Station. So then everybody goes to the same place and looks around.
Well, so I, I find that in Burlington, we're, we're a bit too small to have competition. I'm thinking even like when it comes down to events, there'll be several venues that have an event on the same day. And I'm like, I, I want to go to both these extremely bad, but why, I don't think that anybody is, we're too small in town to compete, competing against each other.
You bring, you bring people in. You bring people in. If there's a lot of things to do, you bring more people in. If there's only two things to do, you don't bring as many people in. If there's a lot of different things for people to go and see and to participate in, the more people will come in because, oh, if I can't get into that, I'll go to that. And boy, this looks like it would be fun, but okay, maybe I'll go to that and I'll go to that. But if you've only got two things for them to do, ah, well, you know, let's not try that.
But on the other hand, if you have, you don't have enough people coming in, even with all the people, then you're, you're not, everybody's not getting, you're making up a piece of the pie to sustain it.
I just kind of think of Burlington right now and for the fact that a lot of people don't necessarily come travel here and things like that, I'd hate for us to be competing against each other because I've seen, I've seen, I've seen so many places suffer because we are competing for, you know, everyone's competing and it's not a big enough market right now.
Well, I'll tell you about the bed and breakfast business. We were the first bed and breakfast in Burlington and we did very, very well. And we continue to do well. After that, Georgette opened one and we were still, we're still doing well. After that, the Metzger's opened one and we were doing even better. And then after that, the Contessa opened. And then we started doing even better. So, and you know, when you say, well, there's not enough, there's too much competition, I don't see that.
Who do you see as our competition primarily?
We had, we had four bed and breakfasts and we're all doing well.
I'm thinking about like event-wise right now. Like really specifically...
That's a competitive space.
Yeah, there's so many people having, you know, wonderful events that many people want to go to all of them and you can't because they all decide to do it on the same day. So it's like...
So the key is do what you've been doing. You guys have to be unique events and some of those things, have some big draws.
Watch your calendar.
And you can keep developing some of those unique events. Not that it doesn't take a lot of volunteer activity. But the unique events, bring in the people.
And you know, and it's very garland because Kenny's right, man. I know you, I see you everywhere. You get into all events. And to some extent, they capitalize each other, absolutely.
Do they?
Well, we can bring in out-of-towners and hotels, downtown's gonna come do that. Otherwise, you know, there's a limited number, a limited population's gonna come to do a victory event in Burlington at one time. And you know, three, four, five years ago, the Washington was in for music, five and six. Now on a Friday night, there won't be five places just on five and six.
For lots, you can still opt in, my friend.
And, 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 and so part of that is there's more interest in working with us. But, but I, I think part of it too is I, I'm sure, or I'm guessing that Sam, when he, you know, came up with this, I don't think he'd see your feasibility study in terms of recommendation. Here's what we think the market demand is for the number of owners.
Right, right.
And if we're looking at choosing one catalyst site, there's three options right now. The, the Drake Block, the PD Building, the Typewriter... the Drake Block, the PD Building, the Typewriter Shop, and it sounds like we have someone on board who's ready to do boutique hotels, they can get the right site. So, kind of, what do we think is the best catalyst site? If we want it to be a hotel, if we do, there's a very good chance we could get that, that done as the downtown community.
Unlike Chris Beck.
Yeah, I think if you, Charlie, I mean, I think you make a darn good point, especially if you have, pardon the pun, but a burden in hand, um, that we ought to be doing what we can as a city to facilitate private sector investment. Bottom line. So.
So, let, how about we propose this, because we'll try to keep Steve kind of happy, because you think, I got a, I got this building, I got to do something with. So, since the two blocks are right next to each other.
Right.
So, if we look at, you know, PD Moose, Typewriter blocks, uh, what if we, that'll be, in essence, our second catalyst site? Just to kind of be fair and on what we have resources-wise to work on, it'll be a little bit lighter of a plan, but it'll be much more timely of a plan. So, why don't we have that as our second catalyst site? And then with your guys' permission or general consensus here, uh, let us keep on the riverfront Memorial Auditorium site as well, so we can kind of get, especially at our next meeting, some feedback from the public on what they see is, what, what their vision is for that, that building and site. Does that sound like a plan?
Yeah.
Is, is Dresserand still the first one in?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, my only question is, is that not too tough to crack, should we waste any more money?
Well, I'm trying to think how to answer that one.
We've come this far, bro.
That's, that's a tough nut to crack. We've come a long way, and it's still enrolled in the land recycle, Iowa's land recycling program, so it's continuing to be addressed by the city in concert with the DNR to get that site to a point of its eventual reuse, and it's going to get there.
With the railroad going through.
The question is, the railroad going through, so what makes it suitable use? What would you, what, if you saw, if you could envision the prettiest thing coming into Burlington as you're coming off Central from thirty-four, what, what would you like to see there? What, what could you imagine?
I think a park.
A park?
Skate park.
We, we could have a park? Park is a great idea.
I thought you was talking about a lady. The prettiest thing.
Right, well, I, well, I mean, you know, so I mean, you know, I envision, my vision is something like a, a, a large glass botanical barn, garden-type greenhouse area that local people could use to grow local produce, produce, local foods, to continue a downtown market year-round, to provide a place for people to go during the winter, that's warm, green, oxygen-rich, um, area. And I, and I, when I, when I say that, I've run into this in certain circumstances. For instance, when I go over the bridge from Council Bluffs over in Omaha, you look up and you see this massive grass, glass greenhouse area as you're coming on I-80 over the Missouri River. And up there is, they've got the, the locomotive trains, and it's, it's a very large kind of arboretum-type area. And is that a financially profitable or sustainable venture? We'd have to look at that, right? Of, of course. But imagine seeing something beautiful that has a year-round use, and that could potentially portions of that site could be leased out to local producers to provide farmers' markets goods year-round. So, you lease out small portions of the greenhouse space, and maybe we do with this thing geothermal, within-ground heat, and, I mean, I'm going, going kind of way out here in my vision, so.
No, it makes sense.
I envision something different underneath there, though. I didn't envision botanical gardens.
That's a lot of money.
It is.
I can't see, I can't see how we could sustain it now. Why can't we just plant a lot of tall trees there and make it a real, in need area? That would be.
Greens, greenspace is a great option, too.
But a lot of tall trees, you know, like a really wooded area around the railroad and all that. I think it would.
I think we have to, you know, if we do that, we need to create a usable space as well.
Yeah, as a park or something.
And that, and that we somehow separate that usable space from the railroad just for safety reasons and that type of thing.
But I think the parks downtown in that area, there's, well, you know, seems like, I think it'd be nice to have a lot of trees and shade if that has a park.
Well, and. Yeah, I think that's, I think that's a great concept, too. I mean.
And maybe it's both.
And, and maybe we provide linkages to that to Burlington's expanding trail system. I mean, it's been expanded over the last ten years, you know, um, bringing it up through there. So, I mean, what I'm, what I'm getting at is, don't be afraid to think big with this. We can flush out the details as far as feasibility, uh, at least initially. Um, but, but think what, so what, what is going to bring people to Burlington is things that are unique, things that are outstanding, things that make it a destination.
Exactly.
So, on top of getting residents to, people to live downtown, we still need to make people think, I'm going to go to Burlington. I'm going to ride the trail system, I'll ride for twenty miles, and my destination is Burlington, and I'm going to stop at the botanical gardens, and I'm going to eat downtown at that cafe we had the other day, it was really good.
Yeah, I mean.
No, McConaughey, yeah.
Yeah, and, and imagine, so the other thing on, on thinking about, I, I, locally-produced foods is a really big deal with certain chefs, certain professional chefs go out of their way to open up a restaurant where they can have locally-produced food.
Well, that's kind of what, um, I know at one restaurant, they kind of went off of that, where they, they downtown getting produce from a farmer's market, and now the farmer's market's there, and, you know, I don't know whether, they're obviously not getting it too locally.
They usually define local within a hundred miles, so. But, but this could, you know, the idea of a farmer's market is, is fresh vegetables and so forth year-round, um, with, with a greenhouse like this.
Looking at the site, it's historically been one property, but now it's likely two properties.
Right, and, and I'm thinking that.
You're not going to have one person operating both sides, generally.
Again, I, I think it needs to be aesthetically pleasing. It needs to be aesthetically kind of a wow factor.
Yeah, I think that's, I think you're indoor, year-round, market style. It's, it's very interesting. I know a lot of other neat cities do it. Um, I'm saying out in DC, they have some really fun indoor.
And I, and I've seen some, I've seen some neat areas where they.
City market, Kansas City.
Collaborated with either the community college or the school system to work on a, a local ag, ag curriculum in combination with a facility like this. Um, so that, so through some collaboration like that, you look at, and work, we have some shared costs, long-term. Um, and I've seen some pretty neat designs come out, uh, for, for space this size.
Maybe the larger side could be the Imperial Museum, and that would fit in the, the.
Yeah, could be.
I think you had a good point, though. It is a good size.
Yeah, agree. I agree with Eric, for sure. Um, but we want to think, I mean, I don't want to limit our thinking, and we want to think that even the potential to alter the transportation system around it that makes it more accessible, is there a way to do that? I don't want to, I, at this point in the game, for this conceptual visioning, I don't want to limit the area in terms of, okay, we got this bridge here, granted, we're not going to take down our new bridge, but how else can we, how else can we potentially alter the transportation system, the walkability, bikeability to that area?
It is a, a little bit more difficult, I think.
And, and think not just about the Dresserand site.
Right.
But the building's upgrading, slightly upgrading toward thirty-four, um, that also long-term, twenty years from now, fifteen years from now, could see that same potential reuse into something very viable. So, so I'm thinking about it, not just the Dresserand, I'm thinking about it's adjoining properties and those adjoining uses, and how all this interplays with downtown.
So, not to harp on the greenhouse concept a little bit, but this is City Market in the River Market area of north end of downtown Kansas City. Um, this thing has been a fixture in the community. These are three-season indoor/outdoor glass, partially enclosed, um, farmer's market structures with some permanent, more permanent, uh, individual stalls, uh, in the structure, if you've ever been down there.
More to that, Kansas City, Kansas.
This is in Kansas City, Missouri, north end of downtown, uh, north of I-35 where it goes east-west through the city.
Yeah.
Close to the river, um, but this has been a catalyst for the entire neighborhood. And so, now you have buildings that, I mean, this was a rough, rough neighborhood not that many years ago. Now, the prices are through the roof, everybody wants to live there.
The same thing's happening in Omaha.
Yeah, and, and that had a lot to do with this being this public gathering space that everybody wanted to go to. So, we have the potential to create one on the west side of downtown with Dresserand, and you already have a public gathering space that we maybe can even go farther with on the east side at the river. So.
What's the, what's the likelihood of protecting the current depot from flooding? It's going to be outside the flood wall, right?
If the public joins up to flood protection systems, I'd be here downtown, or seven, eight years.
My point is, why wouldn't you put a depot in that spot? Try to get Ant Truck back here. It's not going to flood, and it's a perfect spot for that.
Dresserand?
Hmm, hmm, hmm.
It is still a flood plain.
And repurpose, well, yeah, but it's, that's not going to flood.
Five hundred, right?
No, one hundred.
One hundred?
It's a whole site, but, but, there's a very creek that runs through there, but it's not.
It overflows through there. When it does, it's pretty, it's pretty split flowing, and it's fairly good.
That's what happens when you build one.
Yeah.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, it had like four feet of water in it, that, which led to its ultimate down, need to be down. That was, uh, two thousand and ten.
That more or less is decent.
I think that was, yeah, I think that's two thousand and ten.
Listen, I'm going to have to dip out, kids.